So, nobody wants to do it.
You know, the thing that concerns me a little bit, we had a person who's interested in helping, and I understand she's no longer on your board, and that's, that's, you know, what happened there from here to there, but my bigger concern is that French Lick, Orleans, Paoli, I assume Orleans, and Paoli, and West Baden all pay taxpayers' money to you guys to keep us helped out with them. But yet, we don't have any representation on your board.
Well, we-
My opinion, and this is just my opinion, that each town should have a representative on that board.
Uh, Paoli has a representative.
Orleans does too.
Orleans does too.
Has two from Orleans, two from Orleans.
They're not board members, most of the time. The bylaws were set up that if you miss three meetings in a row, we send you a letter and let you, inform you when the next meeting is, so the bylaws have never switched, has never changed. The bylaw says, you miss three in a row, you know, come to the fourth one, then you're off the board. So, we've had them, we've invited them before.
I invited them, I was in the county council and invited them to sign to place someone else.
I'm more talking about, not real topic, what I'm talking about is a French Lick, West Baden, Paoli, and Orleans representative on there.
Sure.
To be the steward of the money that we send. I mean, I'm not saying there's anything wrong with what you're doing with the money. I'm just saying that, you know, the British and the Americans got the heck of a battle one time with some tea and some taxes and no representation.
Absolutely, absolutely.
That's my question.
All right, um, let me give you just a couple. Uh, you got our financial. Forty-seven percent of the money we spend comes from the town and the county, forty-seven cents on the dollar. Rest of it comes from money that we can create through fees, services, and we serve all of Orange County, we serve all four towns. So, I think we're doing a real good job considering that, God rest his soul, Bill Grieffey.
That's not questionable, Glenn, I'm not questioning that you do a good job. I agree.
Okay.
You do a good job.
What is your name on the board?
You know what? If I had a minute extra, I probably would.
That's, that's where I find out when we come to elected officials, you guys have so much going on, especially-
Not on the board.
We didn't take last month.
Ask Tim if I got that.
See, that's what we run into. That's the same way with the vet.
Karen, would you like to join me?
Doctor, Doctor Cooper was, was the last one vet on the board, and he just basically resigned, and he said, I have no time. But we use all three vets. Matter of fact, we have five vets. We have one in Lawrence County, and one in Bloomington.
And the Spring Mill vet too.
And, well, yeah, and Spring Mill. So, we've got five vets, we've got seven shelters that we deal with. We do K-9 Express, and I want people to look up K-9 Express. We just got chosen-
I saw it on Facebook, that's all.
Okay, one of three, there's a lot of things on Facebook that I don't agree with, but if, if we want to go there, I can tell you why she was up, voted off the board, I was talking about K-9 Express. All right, K-9 Express, I have to jump, I have to jump subject.
I saw it mentioned on Facebook.
Yeah, K-9 Express, we, we just got selected to do transports every two weeks instead of every four weeks. That's, that's really great for us, that's more dogs out. We've also started four and a half years ago, almost five years ago, I was voted on as president, the very next day, we signed an agreement with Pets Life out of Bloomington for staying new. See, we know what our problem is, too many animals. We're just now pushing a thousand. Now, I got some literature here that'll tell you, just, just take one dog, don't take the litters and litters, you know how you multiply that. But as of last March, when we talked to county council, county council invites us in and says, what are you going to do with our twenty thousand if we give it to you? So, we went there, presented them, short presentation. At that time, just the animals that we serviced that were staying new were nineteen thousand five hundred less dollars. Now, that doesn't count. Almost eleven hundred dogs we've transported out of Orange County in the last four and a half years. We know what our problem is. The only problem is, talked to a lady in Scottsburg, and they started the same program eight and a half years ago, they're starting to see the light at the end of the tunnel. So, we're only halfway through this.
And also, you've had nominated or wanted another lady on the board, Victoria somebody?
And Pinto.
Yeah, and we, we tried getting ahold of her several times to see if she'd come to meetings.
I'm still, she still has interest, but I don't want to send her up there and you vote her off.
Well, it, we won't vote her off.
She, she was voted off for a reason.
Yeah, we won't vote her off, send her up there. We'll take, we'll take one of the valley entries for West Baden.
That's kind of the part is, you know, of course, you know, I, I don't want how you decide whether a person should be there, I mean, I don't-
Well, when there's more criticism and more problems created than what's solved, I was the last, I'm, I'm sort of a little dense, I was the last person to hear, so I made a motion.
And also, we don't get paid as board members, as directors.
No, nobody-
Well, we said that we got paid, and we don't get paid.
There's, there's a lot of-
Nobody's gonna pay you.
There's, there's, gentlemen and ladies, there, there's a lot of untruths, and, and the problem is, and I've told everybody, when they have a different opinion, attack one of us, I mean, I'm, I got Rob Childers, I'll, I'll take it, but when you attack the shelter, who do you hurt?
We take it personal, because it's her-
Then I take it personal. When we don't have the funding, and towards the end of the year is a terrible time to lose your funding, if Nikki Childers, one of our co-managers was here, she, both co-managers are sicker than I've ever seen. She held her check, gentlemen, last year, or last week. Because we didn't have the funds. There's not too many people that do that.
I don't want to monopolize the time, if you guys want to jump in, go ahead, but I, you know, I, I'm the one who-
You, you could, you could make all kinds of issues, we do the job, we do the job the best we can with the money we have. We've got a shelter north of us, got a three hundred thousand dollar budget.
And it's a little cheaper than ours.
We got a shelter east of us, got a hundred and two thousand dollar budget.
Are those shelters, are those shelters chaired by board elections, or are they run by the county?
Yeah, non-probable.
By the county?
No, non-probable. Basically, I thought White River's financial year, would you like to talk to me? Okay, it's basically done the very same way.
I appreciate that, man.
Okay, but it's, I mean, they, well, they, well, the difference, they have to do with fundraisers also.
If it wasn't for private donations, we couldn't run the way we want to. What I said about Bill Grieffey, we decided that we would go as close to no kill as we could get. I was disappointed, and I'll be the first one to tell you, when I made out my budget and put everybody at twelve thousand, because Bill Grieffey had pushed you from five to ten. And I thought, it's, it's no, anybody that knows me knows that, that I think the county should give more than what they do. Last year, did you notice the county-
The only way we did is we got rid of lobbyist, I believe, on the town.
So, what I did was back off, if you noticed, the budget for next year, I backed, backed to ten, because I don't believe that you should pay that kind of money. But we also have a situation where, like I said, forty-seven cents, where if, if we don't work really hard, we don't make it. And what's not in there is, did you notice Paoli was thirteen thousand eight hundred dollars?
Well, this one, they're around seventy-five.
That was in March?
Well, that was-
Last year's?
Now, that was through September.
This is through September.
Oh.
Yeah, well, last year was thirteen thousand eight hundred, you should have got it, I passed it out to a board member that was supposed to bring it in in May.
I brought it, I brought it in.
But then she brought it in again. But in May, I gave this person a copy, and then I passed that on to French Lick and West Baden, I was using her as a V8 something. That didn't work out too well.
Here's, here's the point, Brad, we've got a person who's doing animal control, French Lick and West Baden, that y'all don't approve of them.
Absolutely.
So, there's, there's a big issue.
Well, here, uh, raise your hands if you've had animal control schooling or still going to school. What I'm worried about is their safety. Do you have safety equipment for them? Does she have it? Okay. Very important that she has safety equipment, very important that she goes to class.
We've got an Orleans, we have animal control person.
Yes, they've been trained, they've trained.
So, if we train and equip our animal control person.
Yeah, yeah, well, I mean, the last year, she sent another girl that brought him up the last time, she didn't even bring him up, she sent someone else to bring him up.
We realize that, that there's personality issues. We're trying to find our way through.
Yeah.
And we have, we have somebody down here who, from our standpoint and from what we see, is very incentivized to try and take care of animals. And as you commented, that it's really difficult to find people who really, who really have a passion for it.
Yes.
And we have, but that seems to be a conflict between yourselves and the person.
Well, I mean, like I explained to Kirk, what Paoli does is what Orleans does, and after hours, they have in their garages, their county, their county garages, set up a kennel for what they take in after hours, then they bring them in during hours, because paperwork has to be filled out, the dogs have to have their shots and medicine before they get in with the other dogs, or before they walk through the kennels, so they don't spread any kind of disease. So, all that has to be done, it just can't be brought up there and put in there.
So, you're telling me that if we train our person, you don't care who that person is, or they're trained?
No, no. We just, like I said, I had explained to Tana, the dog, to have a kennel, have you guys set up a kennel here in West Baden, where when the dogs are brought in after hours, they, and then they can be transported during shelter hours.
It might be a joint venture on the kennel, French Lick and West Baden.
I thought about that myself. If you guys want to build a kennel, if you guys want to take on, you'll probably notice that we spent over twenty thousand dollars on vet, vet bills.
I'm saying just for holding.
Just for holding.
Well, just for holding, yeah, we, we have the same thing.
Yeah.
Um, everybody I know has, has, has developed that. There's also-
I, I mean, I had had her in there after hours several times, but through, when she'd drop one off and I'd go up there if I was out of town, but, um, you know, Orleans keeps theirs, Paoli keeps theirs until the shelter's open, and then they bring them in.
Also, also have to work with the shelter, the shelter can't be overwhelmed. We have an issue with, with rescue, we can't do rescue unless we set up a group.
Somewhere to go with them, we don't have that kind of staff.
We just don't have that capacity. We're, we're a hundred and forty-two percent capacity last year, we just don't have that capacity. Maybe more than a hundred percent. A hundred percent, a hundred percent is how many cages we have, how many animals we can have in each cage. I always tell it this way, when my wife and I was up at Purdue University taking our course in shelter management, they had each dog in each cage, and said, this is the way that you want to see when we come to your facility. You come to ours, we got two, we got five, we got six. So, you count the number of cages, you count.
The number of animals against the cages.
Against the cages, and that's how you go up to a hundred and forty-two percent. We're overwhelmed all the time. Just brought in seven today, seven dogs.
And we brought in the last month, Tom, you know.
Well, the Hanleys lady brought in six last week, and then Spencer Staley, is he from down here? He must be West Baden, he brought in one Friday.
Here's another issue we'd have when, when working with the shelter.
We need to get you that though.
We have, we have fees that, that have to be passed on to individuals, and in one case, we had six dogs brought up, and she said they were being given us free, that there wasn't going to be any charge. In other words, we couldn't charge her, and she go, oh, your animal control, so we said, no, don't charge, you put under my name. See, we can't do that, we have to generate money if there are people, so.
Shine for the board.
Look.
You informed the board that they were going to bring, if the board was okay with it or not okay? Did they agree to it or not agree to it?
You understand what I'm saying?
Serrated, please, it's a rater.
We have to charge individual fees for rent.
She says that she brought this up to the board and said they're going to be bringing them.
And we asked her who they belong to, and I don't believe-
She said they were strays, but it, it may not be in the-
We know where they were coming from, I mean, we're, we're-
It's from the ground, I can ask them.
Well, they came, but the board didn't tell her not to bring them.
Well, she said they were strays down here, is what she said, that they were, this lady's-
They weren't marked, were they? I don't know, I ain't even tell.
Well, the lady that brought them in, they were her dogs, I mean, that's how we know.
That was crazy, didn't matter. Oh, by the way, just for instance, I picked up three a mile from the airport the other day, I used town equipment, Paoli town equipment, I'm responsible for that. So, we still go out in the county, we go to surrounding areas, uh, the sheriff's department calls me.
You couldn't catch old yellow.
No, uh, he's smarter than I am. Yes, yes, and the neighbors told me to leave him alone. He's smarter than I am. I even darted him, and he's smarter than I am.
Well, I, you know, I don't know how you get by the personality part of this, uh, you know, it saddens me a little bit, but we've got somebody that's really dedicated and wants to do it, and if all she likes is training, I think we can fix that. And if y'all are telling, if y'all are telling me that it doesn't matter-
Common sense and courtesy goes a long way, so.
That's pretty subjective too. Common sense and courtesy, please.
And you have to know a person before you-
It's, no, it's, it's common sense and courtesy, what's common sense to me may not be to you, what's courtesy to you may not be to me, so anytime you put a board in charge of common sense and courtesy, it gets a little sticky.
I don't understand.
People have to agree and disagree.
Well, sure.
John and I agree all the time, we brought this three, two, three times tonight, but we're going to leave, we say we're still here for the county.
You know, this is probably the wrong place, we probably should have an executive meeting.
Yeah, that's fine.
But, but she, she lost me when she come in and threatened to sue the board over defamation of her, that's when she lost me. Before that, she had me.
Wasn't reported to you specifically?
So, I mean, I had to go with the board members, so we took a vote, and that was it.
Well, you guys, what do you think? What do we need to do here? We need to have an executive meeting with them? Can we have an executive meeting with them? That's the question.
I completely believe we can. I, I don't think under, I don't think under oath and law we can, I don't think we have an option for-
You might be right.
Yeah, I think you're right.
We can meet with our person in executive session.
We can't, we can't have it.
I think a couple of you guys think of their meeting.
Yeah, here's another question. How many men do the animal shelter in the past year?
I have.
Cool, thank you. See what we do. We've gone a long way, and, and this criticism hurts everybody, it gives so much, and if you don't understand that, then we're already in trouble.
It's a two-way street.
Oh, it absolutely is, and then you're talking to a guy that bends, so, I remember we had a meeting before.
Yeah, and you were talking to a guy that supported you right on through it.
Hundred percent, hundred percent.
I think it even got in the paper, Miles said I prefer the public than politics.
Yes, I read that, always interested in politics. Can't, can't hold office.
But I can't, but I can't say that I like this subjectiveness that I'm hearing.
But, we didn't like it either.
I understand, it's a, like I said, it's a two-way, it's a two-way street.
We, we knew where she come from, we knew that she would make an ideal liaison if she understood what we could do and what we couldn't do. We just never got to that point. I took it as a personal loss, because I couldn't get her to the point I needed her to be at to understand, shelter comes first. It just never materialized that way. But, you know, we had issues, does she get to use the van? No. Does she get the key to the shelter? No. She has to follow our procedures. I mean, it's just, it protects the animals.
As long as everybody's following, then it's fine.
Everybody does.
I mean, they, all animals get checked in before they ever go back into the shelter, they get their shots and medicine.
I always say the medicine's on board before the paws hit the ground, and that's where you keep the parvoves, the really nasty diseases at.
Dom, I would say we need to talk with Tab a little bit, probably in executive session.
Absolutely.
And then, uh, get back to America.
Okay, well, we're Plan A. We're, you, you help fund us so we can help fund the county, and I always tell the county this, county has put the shelter out of business. Any one of the towns can, that's how fragile we are. So, anything the town decides to do, let us know.
Well, we'll go for it. Beer to me, or, you know, everybody's in it for the animals, right?
Absolutely.
At the end of the day, maybe we people need to just try to be long, a little harder.
That's true. It takes, it takes a certain person. Thank you for your time, Leah.
Thank you.
I mean, you guys are a great group.
We need to have, I'm, I'm, I would be reluctant to have a vote to read and say anything to this county.
Yeah, I will tune till we, till we have further discussion, because we're not, by the end of the year, they'll either-
Come on.
Right.
John?
I appreciate it.
Who would you be around with next, Doug? Okay, uh, Julia Thomas? We go from funding, insurance.
You guys want a copy of this? The town of French Lick normally renews their interim policy on January first, and I won't take up too much time kind of explaining what's going on, but, um, due to health care reform and the Affordable Care Act, um, the town of French Lick is below, might as well just park it down there. The town of French Lick is called a small group, and small groups, under fifty employees, um, are going to move to community rates at their first renewal in two thousand and fourteen. Yours was normally scheduled for January, so January of two thousand and fourteen would move to community rate. And what that announced to is the best rate that you can have right now is a point six five, and that's where you're at. The worst rate is a one point three five. Community rates are at a one point one, so they're right in the middle for the southern half of Indiana. So, what we are heading against next year is you moving from a point six five to a one point one with community rates, which will be a thirty to fifty percent increase in cost. Now, J benefits-
Over these numbers.
Well, yes, over your current numbers, is what you're heading towards for next year. Um, J benefits has a lot of different options to get you out of that community rating, so don't-
No, they're not that good though, are they?
Actually, I mean, we are, yeah, there is some good plans. Um, there's some different types of funding arrangements that we can do.
We can log in early or new, so, so move.
Yeah, so, so what I'm presenting is, if we renew early in, in December of two thousand and thirteen, your prices will stay firm till December of two thousand and fourteen.
Lady, if you see there's a motion on that table.
Tell him, you know.
Hey, you guys are good at that.
Do you have any problem with this, do you?
Not at all.
I got a motion, do I have a second? On the table?
You guys are good, thank you.
Unfortunately, without our control, we, we can't, we can't survive the thirty to fifty percent increase.
No, no, and I think next year, that'll be just all of next year to do some different things to make it work. Yes.
Are we able to get flu vouchers?
You are going to be able to get flu vouchers, yes. We're not exactly sure, I hope you have some negotiations with the CDC and we'll bring them in. So, that's kind of where that's at, the flu vouchers, and the flu vaccine is a little different this year, so it's been delayed.
Okay, all right.
Absolutely.
So, you get flu vouchers?
Yeah. Unless you guys would rather have a flu clinic day.
I think that last year, I know you guys would rather just have the vouchers and do it yourselves than have somebody come in, and, okay.
Okay, um, it says easy, but five percent easy to see that it's not as expected, unfortunately. Is lower.
My insurance increase?
Okay.
My new.
My new.
My new.
I know.
New, new, new.
Your assistant, your assistant, because she-
You should have received the money.
There's two cents because you're a part of a, I'll be a little different.
They were, 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 they were that place.
They were mad, just, um-
So, forgive me.
We received, we received two copies of this.
We received two copies of that, okay.
That's okay, this is the one we got. We're on the app, and everybody just pick one with the other.
I think it's a bad in a group, we got a group.
Yeah, because, and the problem with this-
That's fair.
We don't have any other way to explain.
So, wait, can I?
Uh-huh.
I think you're handing it back. Okay, I've got a, a regulation approved, both have a motion. I got a motion, do I have a second or anything? So, you don't have anything else? Okay, I would accept public comments from any new business items?
I'd just like to, I don't have a new business item, but I would like the board to explain to me how you can justify withholding the funds from the Humane Society, especially at the end of the year, when you know that it goes for animal care, when it sounds like you've just got a personality issue to resolve. I would think resolving a personality issue has nothing to do with making certain that that shelter has the funds that they need to provide the care for the animals.
Ma'am, you are also aware, no offense to these folks, but we had no financial statements up until last week for the entire year?
Yes, but this shelter is always, I mean, I just lived out in this community for a few years, and I know, and I visited that shelter too, and I give my personal contributions every year to that shelter, but you don't pull funds at the end of the year. I mean, you approved thousands of dollars for Christmas lights, and you won't feed the animals of the community?
Ma'am, did you also see that we've already paid ten thousand dollars?
You know what? That was such a nominal amount, when you know what it costs the animals.
That was our commitment?
That is such a small amount for such a large community, I'm sorry, but you have a budget, I mean, just release the funds, give the folks the funds they need, work out your little personal issues, and, you know, we need to put, being such a dictatorship in this community, let's start funding the programs that actually improve this community and care for our animals and our individuals. I mean, how can you ask people to volunteer their time and do what they do at that shelter and not at least provide them the minimum amount of, of funding? And like I said, I, it kills me that you do, you have this big accrual for Christmas lights, and you won't buy dog food.
Excuse me, ma'am.
Peggy L. Jones, I live just down the road, okay, just, if not, you can come to Peggy.
I called, I called my wife Bam on our first day, so I'm calling you the same way if you don't mind.
Go ahead, go ahead.
All right, um, if, if you had somebody that you were giving money to, and you asked for, uh, financial statements for seven, eight, nine months, and you got nothing back from them, would you not at least say, we're going to hold up funds until we find out what your finances are?
Oh, my heavens, I find it so hypocritical coming from this board, when you spend money like it's water on some of the most ridiculous items, and you're not held accountable for so many of those items. This is a piddly amount of money to release to these folks so they can do a job that's necessary for this county, and I'm sure I'm just blowing a couple of money, I'm just blowing smoke into this, into the air, but I just, I find it, I find it absolutely morally disgusting that you will not release the money to the Humane Society.
Okay, I, I have a question. How much did we make a commitment for you for this year?
Twelve thousand.
Okay, how much has all the rest of the towns committed?
Ten thousand.
And we have paid, how much do you expect?
Nine thousand.
Okay, so, our commitment to you was more than any other town in the county, correct?
You were the ones that went with my budget of twelve thousand dollars the other year.
Yes or no, we, we did commit more.
The other three towns did.
We did commit more.
You did commit more, yes.
So, how can you sit there and say that we haven't-
Because, because none of you have ever given the appropriate amount to this facility. You know, I, I'm sorry, but there's nothing you can say-
Maybe you ought to go get those other towns to jump up to the top of the board here.
I would love to, but I live in the town of French Lick and I'm here at this meeting because you're supposed to be running something.
We have paid your day what we should have.
Okay, I just told you, you asked for public comment. This is my comment on it. I find it reprehensible that you do not release the money that you committed because it sounds to me like you've got a little, little pissing contest going on with personalities. And I don't know anything about your little issues, but I do know that those folks need the money to feed those dogs and complete the job they need to do. I've got four of them running on my property right now that I can't run down. And I don't even, I wouldn't ever even dare to call somebody because I know how overprouded the shelter is. But I just don't know how you sleep at night approving Christmas lights and then you won't release the money to the Humane Society. And I do know how hard those folks work, and I do know how much time they give. And they're not up here getting paid for their time for every meeting. And I, I think that it's, you know, in the spirit of the holidays, it's, we're coming into Thanksgiving and Christmas. Let the money go. Let these folks do their job.
My opinion, my opinion on that would be really, we were, we did tell them we would give them that amount of money.
A man hardly-
So I feel like we should release what we did tell them, and then beyond that point, maybe have our meeting.
We haven't said that we wouldn't release that.
But I just, you know, just keep working at it.
We did say we wanted to be with our person.
But is that next month or this month?
It's this month.
Ma'am, we have two meetings in mind.
Yes, I know that. I've attended some, I've attended some, but I'm not really certain what your schedule is for the holidays. I'm just asking you to not leave these people in limbo. And I, I don't know either of these folks necessarily. I just know what it takes to run a shelter and do it on the limited budget that these folks have always had.
I appreciate your passion for the animals, but I also have a passion for the food pantry. And I think everybody up here has their own passion of what they give their time and talent and monies to. And I appreciate that our passion may not be the same as yours. We're trying to find a balance amongst all of them.
Just release their money. That's all I'm asking you to do. Meet your commitment for these folks for the year. Take the pressure off them. I mean, you, you can already see that this is a strain on them personally, financially, and in every other way. Just don't blackmail them, please.
As of, as of September, according to your financials, we had given you, I thought it said ten thousand dollars? Right at West Bay, we gave you ten thousand dollars?
West Bay, and I'll just have to just check it for the first year for ten thousand dollars. That's what carries us until our quarterly payments start coming in.
And a year or two ago, when you all were really short, we went ahead and went above and beyond anything that you'd asked for, correct?
I don't remember that. I think you gave ten.
Yeah.
And I know you don't want to hear from me anymore.
Ten thousand dollars, short three thousand.
But last, last year, I went to Paoli Town Council and they met our salary budget at thirty-eight hundred dollars. They gave thirteen thousand eight hundred. We were cut ten thousand dollars by the county last year. Actually, I always ask them to match the town. And that's forty thousand from the towns, ten piece, and forty thousand from the county. The county never gives any more than ten, and last year, due to budget restraints, they gave me ten.
No, they usually give twenty, but last year, they only gave us ten.
They only gave us ten.
But they bought an incinerator.
They bought an incinerator from the casino money, and we always appreciate what we get. But I can't pay the people that work up there with what we make off the incinerator. So ten thousand dollars, we just made it to December. And by the grace of God and Paoli Town Council, I got thirty-eight hundred to pay the wages for December. Maybe we're trying to do too much sometimes.
We're just trying to do it right. We just want it right.
That's a commitment we have to Orange County. That's a commitment we have to the towns.
Appreciate it. I was just trying to understand where we were on what we had paid you and what we still owe you for our commitment.
You, you paid us three thousand dollars a quarter, you paid nine thousand, and we were waiting on the three thousand.
Correct. And that normally is paid at the beginning of the quarter or the end of the quarter?
It varies. Some people pay at the beginning of the quarter and some people, the county waits till the end of the quarter.
So does it cause hardship if we wait until two weeks and the town decides to pay that money?
We did a fundraiser on the square to cover the checks that we had out, and the town of Paoli went ahead and cut us a check for twenty-five to cover this week and part of next week. It's, it's, with us, it's always a last minute venture when it comes to finances. I want the council to realize it takes a hundred and fifty to a hundred and sixty thousand dollars to run a shelter and run it right. We do it on usually sixty thousand dollars.
I'm lost. You said that you have commitments from the county and the towns of sixty thousand dollars and you rate as forty percent, forty-seven percent of your revenue?
Forty-seven percent.
Forty-seven, of, of what we spent.
Of what we spent.
Of what we spent.
You're a hundred and eight, right, or something like that? Is that your number?
Yeah, we went a hundred and, a hundred and eight.
Okay, we said sixty and I got lost in here. Sixty thousand dollars.
Well, we got fifty-three thousand eight hundred dollars last year. That's, that's where that figure come from. We spent over a hundred and eight thousand dollars. I think you had a financial statement of last year in May.
Yes, she brought the financial.
Alright, that's cool.
And we wouldn't have been so far behind, but we just couldn't afford to pay-
We're trying to save money. So we went with an individual that we thought could handle the books, and we were three months into it before we decided we had to do something else. So it took us another three months. It wasn't anything, and I didn't realize, and it, maybe we should make it policy. I didn't realize that you wanted a financial report every week or every month. That costs a lot of money for the county. I try to give it quarterly, but you always have a statement before July first, which is the budget for next year.
I think quarterly's fine, you know, just, you know, three quarters of balance for what's kind of concerning.
Yeah, that's the reason you got last year's statement, is because we weren't ready to, and they knew that, the person that, that-
She told us that, but we, we got our, we got our last year's statement in the middle of this year, and then we got, we got nine month statement after.
Well, it was done. It was just an oversight that you guys didn't have the last year's statement the first of the year because it was done. Because Mary Lee Brown finished out our last year. Because we picked up from, when you picked up from where Mary Lee left off.
You got it same time the county got there. It's always to let you know what we did last year versus what we do this year, or what's next year's budget.
Any comments?
With it being a problem, if we got a quarterly report-
No.
I'll send it to you as soon as, I can send it to you monthly. I can fax it just like I did this. I can do it every month because she, she's got this month's done.
As we said, quarterly is the thing. We just wanted to get something on, in a, in a, in a fashion, so we understood where the numbers were.
Okay, yeah, I mean, whatever, however you want it.
Am I only other issues? We don't have anybody from here on board. That's, that's an issue, right? So how about you?
Me? I'd be glad to. I'd be glad to serve on board. Yes, I would.
Thoughts?
I'm not, I'm not in the city limits, but I'm just about two miles out of it, yes. I can give you my name address and all of it, yep. I'll serve on board. If you're willing to put up with me, I'll do it.
Thank you.
We still have patrol officer there.
Well, that's a problem. That's a problem.
That's the issue.
What, what do you guys suggest we do about animal control? I mean, we've got a person. We're willing to be that person. I think there's a willingness of this board to train that person. And so, you know, tell me, tell me how we resolve this match, I guess.
You have two years of college.
I'm not talking about animal control, ma'am. Are you willing?
There's, there's an animal control officer, if you don't mind. There's an animal control school in Plainfield. We sent our last one to a young man that does-
Like two weeks or a week?
It's, it's a week. I believe the town of Bay only paid five hundred dollars. We have a truck, credit card, phone, catch poles, safety equipment for events. We also have, might be familiar with our tranquilizer gun. We have the only one in the county because that the vets use that from time to time along with its mail for us.
So if we, if we say to you, "We want this young lady to be our animal control officer" because she came forward and she's the only person that's ever come forward in all the years I've intermed on this deal, and we're willing to pay the training, are you willing to work with us?
She has to work with us, yes.
Goes both ways.
Sure, well, that's what I said. Animal control officer, we know we're closed on Sunday.
So we don't get any tracks?
Yeah, you've already said that we need to hold him in the cage.
Absolutely. Everybody's got-
You know, it sounds to me like if we can get her trained as a control officer, she's got a passion for it. This young lady in the second row is willing to sit on the board, that pretty well gets us where we need to be, if everybody just get along.
Sounds good to me.
Thoughts?
Somehow I'm emotionally hooked up to our commitment. I think we should do that, we've committed for that, and then beyond that. And I think we'll have a good person on the board that'll work out for our interest. So I think the tavern, Peggy, you know, I think-
I think that's the important thing, is that we are working together also.
And you are, I don't know who on the board is-
We are willing, we, I've seen volunteers.
I don't have a clear determination towards anything other than holding, holding our, not holding our volunteers hostage.
I'll second.
Kev, are you willing to do the training? I didn't see a yes when he asked you that. Are you willing to do that?
Sure, okay.
I just didn't see you.
Yeah, I just said yes. You wanna, I've spent thirty thousand dollars of my own money for two years of veterinary technician school, which teaches animal restraint, all the diseases. I don't see where we-
We're willing to pay money.
I know, but I'm just saying.
We're happy to do that.
I think two weeks and another executive meeting, and maybe if Peggy would like to join us.
Well, you and Peggy can talk. You don't have to have an executive meeting.
No, but-
I know where you guys get money. Kev, here's a good resolution to the problem here. And if it's a matter of you being trained and you're, you're willing to do the training and we're willing to pay for it, that should get rid of that.
Right.
If she's willing to sit on the board, you and her work together for the good of West Bay and French Lick. And, you know, we're getting past all this stuff, then it's a good resolution. Old Tim will get that done. No.
Back there.
Well, before you take the front to this, that's on your grind.
Listen to that.
Tim, go on with it.
There's still details. We'll figure that out. We can figure this out. But based on the two of them, I'll second Marley's folks to get these two, want to go ahead and go forward as they're said.
We've got some last grantee who wants to keep us off stuff.
We do.
They need it.
Not for very long.
You okay with it?
Yeah, it's for the animals, so that's a lot of money.
We all have to give a little sometimes.
That's exactly right. I'm feeling.
Okay. Motion and second is, your motion was to go ahead and make a appointment and do training for Tab.
And extend our obligation.
And fulfill the obligation, correct? All three from public? I just want to make sure I'm-
That's what I seconded, no.
Well, I know, but I was gonna make- It was a group deal. I'm, I'm just trying to make sure I understand what it says, you know, just that part about, about passing bills and not ever having read anything of it. It seems to not work for a while. Okay, I have a motion and a second. We've had lots of discussion. John, thoughts? If not, then we can go to vote. Your call. On the table? Pose.
I just hope that all parties will hold up their end.
That's right. That's what it's all, you know, it's not long till 2014.
There's always a meeting next month.
That's right. You mean in two weeks, man?
Two weeks.
Over a month.
Well, you, you know, he, you know, you're, you're our person. You're valid, the valid person to me. West Bay may or may not agree, and she's our person, but you gotta, yeah, we'll, we'll get our training. We'll make it happen.
I think that's what, I mean, we're gonna feel more, is having a person to represent us. Peggy can come back to us and keep us-
Well, I can see if Peggy doesn't care to speak up.
That's right. Certainly, this has always been a problem.
Me too.
If I can correct the council, you've always had somebody looking out for West Bay and French Lick.
We, we weren't meaning to-
No, I know. I don't take anything personal. It's too late.
Our tax, our tax-
I don't want to take it personal.
Our, our taxidermist, we need somebody up there, honestly. We're gonna send money. We'll have somebody to-
That's, that's fine with me, but you've always had somebody to head your backs, sir.
True, we, we would just like-
Thank you, I don't think that's-
We just want to have somebody who has voting rights on your board. That's what we're trying to get.
That's no problem.
Now, do you have to go through an approval process on the board's board?
I do now. I do now. I didn't used to.
Do you foresee any problems?
No, sir.
What's your approval, what's your, your process leading up to approval in that case?
They usually turn in a short, I call it resume, and we do a little background check, ask some questions, and, and put them on. Could we wait now?
Well, I was, I was, I'm a retired airline captain and I was a flight deck officer, so I'd been checked out by the TSA, FAA, FBI.
We used to just open the door and anybody that'd come in, we said, "Sit down, let's go."
But I've been trained to use a gun, so.
Cool, we'll take her.
No comments? Are there river business or anything? I'm gonna ask something.
We're talking about the river.
Yeah, because I actually-
Okay, go for it.
Did you go over and see?
Absolutely, sir. I spent two hours over there. I am just in a piece, though, when you're talking about people not seeing anything from the gazebo.
Gazebo's in the woods.
Yeah.
Okay, when you said the gazebo, there's the parking lot, and that's where the people sit at.
No, you talked about the gazebos underneath the trees. It has a, a lot of forest between it and the school kids, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Now, if you move the train cars and come at that-
You sit on the trees.
Don't hurt the trees also, Tommy.
I'm talking about the old, there's, there's-
No, that's not your problem. Five hundred feet of trees up there, Tommy, already.
It looks nice.
Yeah, and they, I guess they could sit over there.
This is what I'm talking about.
We sat there. I was there.
And you see the-
Here's, here's what we can do out back here. And there the city-
But that's not your, your love to the locals.
Yeah, but they don't know what you're talking about.
It's really nice.
So that helps. American service, I think. Well, that's- Like, come to me. This is the, yeah, they see.
Well, we got very little talk to them in that sense, do you have a problem?
Have you talked to them with the railroad? The railroad?
Well, they just hold us last speed and they were having a fence, they had ten books. So you couldn't see the train cars at all. So that was why we have a playground.
The, the train cars were forced to be-
And that's what we said. Tony, if you don't understand, you need to go talk to the railroad. We have no control over that.
Does town zoning rules, does the same-
No, they do not apply. If it's on their property, they fall under, if they're all transported. From transportation, town has no zoning requirements and no zoning ability to have any impact on railway right of way. Period.
Okay, but could we work together for a long time?
We have been trying to- That's what we were trying, that's where we were trying to get to.
Okay, but I say, why don't you go see the railroad guy?
I went in there, went in, there's five people in that building, said, and asked them why they want to. And that yellow building, they're bad mad, come on, walk in at the summer.
I think you should get, I think you should get the guy and walk over to them and say, walk with me. And let me show you what Ricky and Rick do. Let me show you what Rick will talk, Rick will- But walking up there, saying you're looking for, you're looking for everything, that's really what you need.
Pretty good thing is-
I got a question.
That's the only way we're gonna get to him.
Hey, Data?
Yes, sir.
Got a question. Side height fence that's in the agreement, ten foot or eight?
Eight foot. Eight foot, and you got a, eight foot was what's in the agreement. Not gonna say they can't put a ten, but you've got fourteen to sixteen foot railroad cars. So it really means absolutely nothing. You're, you're still gonna see the railroad cars and I think a lot of the fencing was more of a safety concern.
Where does the fencing start? Is the fencing right up to their new building?
Yes, sir, it does.
All the way to their new building?
I believe it does. On the other side of their new building, the side which he's talking about, there's gonna be another building, which is gonna be their garage workshop where they're gonna do the repairs on the locomotives and, and cars.
Not the same place where they cleared out farther on down by the footballs, by the football field?
I think that's for their tracks. There's a few tracks that are gonna have to separate off there to go ahead and to come off to the, to the building. That area is, one way or another, gonna have something. There's gonna be fence there. It, it runs hundreds of feet.
Okay.
And I believe that fence is the fence with the straps in it. That you, that you can't see through.
Yeah, if we're matched with straps through.
So you're not gonna be able to see in there. You're not gonna be able to see through it.
You'll see over it though for, in a longer distance, won't you?
Will people in the wheelchair still be able to see the grandkids playing on the playground?
Not unless they can see between the railroad cars, I don't believe they would. I mean, I'm not being sarcastic, I don't know.
It's their railroad.
See between the railroad cars.
You're right, it's their railroad. They can pretty much do what they want.
Well, really, there's very few laws and, and I'm not trying to protect them at all. I mean, I just, I've dealt with it from our standpoint. And there's hardly anything-
Google and Google abandoned railroad car in towns. There's towns that have eight hundred, a thousand cars surrounding the town, they can't do anything about it. And it's a big stink, a lot of places. Our problem's not nearly that big. It's just noticeable. So, you know, just research on this, it's a tough, it's a tough thing.
But don't we give the road station funding and have the OCDC go funding?
The OCDC, but that, that doesn't come from the town. We don't have any impact on that. Who is et cetera of David's vote and our recommendations to him. That's the limit of our, of our vote.
But I, you know, the only, my line, the only way we can get anything done with them is if, if they agree with us and think they ought to move the cars. Because otherwise, you know, remember here a year or two ago, when we moved those cars?
It's two years ago.
Two years ago. When we cleaned out the wood and moved the cars, we did that by going down and say, guys, you know, how about helping us out? So maybe that's how we gotta do it. Because it's not, we're not gonna be able to legislate or, or anything.
There's very few laws that you can uphold in Catholic law.
But maybe as a community partner, they listen.
It's, it's a, it's a partnership as opposed to having any kind of animal or ability to push. That is, that is not within our purview in any kind of legislative manner. And we have no stick that's available to us. It has to be working as friends, not, not telling people what they need to do.
But it's something you could suggest, you're the town board, eventually you can represent the people. And you could probably suggest to this man, who is our neighbor.
Okay. How many, how many times have you been down to talk to them about this personally?
I was down there this summer.
Of course.
A few years ago, yeah.
Okay, I'm down there at least every two to four weeks, every month, to talk to them about this.
So, well, I guess what I'm saying, is I see dear, that seventy seven year old lady coming here several times, where you guys make her clean up her trailer. But yet, the train station for years, we tried to make them clean up.
It's on their right of way, Tony.
But you can still make them clean after.
No, you can't. Tell me you're not, you're not-
I don't understand that.
It's a, it's a federal deal, you can't drop that.
You're not wanting to hear or you're not listening, one. And possibly can have a little persuasion over the railroad. But they kind of under several railroad regulations, which we, this town, this town board or this county has no authority over. Get on your internet, check it out.
Okay, let me, let me go back to your brush.
About the railroad.
You were talking about TSA. Could we tell TSA what they needed to do?
No, I mean, I, I think it is, it is a problem.
It, they're, the- The issue, Guy, is they have a federal mandate on, on their, on the, on the railroad bed, all right? And their right of way, that limited the ability of any local town to decide how that railway was gonna be twisted. Because some people said, we don't want the railroad in our town. When that was the same thing as having an interstate, it was very important. Because they were afraid some town in the middle of a long string was gonna shut the railroad down. So the federal government said, we have the right to tell them what to do. Perhaps the state does, and I'm not, that's a, seems to be a gray area. But any local has no legal ability to limit and or control and or legislate anything within their rail bed and their railroad right of way. Okay? Is, is that clear?
Kind of, I just don't see the way you can't work together with another-
We're putting, we're putting it on. But, but telling them what they've gotta go do is not-
Suggestion to them, okay? And the only leverage you guys have is non-vote. And maybe have that person say, let's withhold their funds.
We did, we did. Tony, Tony, David, you remember when, you remember when David gave the presentation? He talked about they had to remove so many rail cars before they could get additional funds?
Yes.
Okay? That is part of what you're talking about that's already been in place and was negotiated over two years ago. It's an ongoing process.
Here's the deal, if we tell them, we're not gonna give you guys any more money until you move all your cars. Okay, they just won't get the money. They don't have to move their cars. It doesn't matter what you guys do, if, if they don't move their cars, they don't have to. So the idea was, we're gonna try to find this happy medium with guys, let's clean up a little bit. We're gonna help fund your project. We know it's an expense to get all this stuff done, but with the funding that you're getting from these local towns in the county, realize from the county, it's support from the town. They're, they're gonna try to hold up their end and clean this up. This isn't something that just happened overnight. It's been fifty years in the making. And we, in the last year or two, really been on par. And they have done a significant amount, those that I feel like. But they've drawn up a proposal saying, if we move this many cars, then we're gonna get this draw. In that draw, we're gonna do fencing, we're gonna change these rails around. And then on the next one, they're gonna do a building. And they're, they're being held to that.
So could you guys negotiate the fencing with them and say, do you really need a fence?
No, I, I hate that.
We've already agreed upon, I wasn't on the board at that time when they did this. This has been a year ago. They've already agreed on what they proposed. They've already said, yes, we will do this. When you meet this criteria, we'll give you this draw. When you meet this criteria, we give you the next draw. And so far, they're doing that and they're not gonna get another draw until they meet that. Once they do, we give it to them. But if we tell them, we're not gonna give you any more money until you move all your railroad cars, hold that over their head, it's just gonna leave all these railroad cars for us to look at.
You agree with what I said, is go down and see Rick at the railroad station?
Yeah. To just go talk to him and explain to him the situation will be a lot more rewarding than trying to say, I'm gonna try to get the county or the county to withhold your funds. That's, that's not gonna do any good, that's just gonna-
Move a couple of train cars and let those people live out their life with a nice view of the school.
Well, maybe, maybe you could go talk to him and he could get a different perspective of the situation. You know, he's my, I gotta talk to him. You just need to go talk to him and let him know and I'm sure he'll try to do all the things.
I mean, I, we're not, one thing's for certain, we're not able to convince him to do it.
No, not at all.
And I think if one of us go there, they may even do that as we're trying to, you know, force them or hold it over their head. If a citizen or two go over and talk to them, it might help.
Tony, do you realize how much they have cleaned up already?
Do you realize how many years that's, that they're trying to do?
Tell them they had a-
It's been two, over two years.
How many boxcars has left this valley in the last month and a half?
How many, you don't underestimate. How many?
A bunch of them.
I would say someone, someone right there.
The reason, the reason that they have is every time they take four or five out of the spring, they bring four, five or six more and put in. I sat here and watched, I don't know how many, go out of here and go to Louisville Jumpyard. Level a trailer. It's four or five a week.
That's wonderful. That's good. Glad to see that.
So, you know.
If they would get the, she would have the baseball track out of that baseball.
Don't be, don't be, I hear Boston's trying to work with us. Because what I'm telling you is, they are working hard to beautify the area, not just the area behind Medco. And like, they don't, they can take every one of them, not put up a fence at all. The boxcars that they're gonna keep, I think four or five in it, Dave.
Yeah, they plan on keeping four cars for storage, long term. They'll always be there.
If they keep them up around that area, they can leave the fence down and you're not gonna be able to see the playground anyhow.
If they decide to.
Right.
But he may talk to Ray and get Rick to separate those two cars.
What he's gonna do is get Rick to just walk up there with him.
Exactly.
See what those folks are seeing.
I mean, we're not trying to be hard to deal off with, this is just a fact. It's kind of out of your hands. Right.
I'd like to change the subject. This is a little bit about social media. And I think after many people create some of which, you might understand some of the problems that we're facing.
We've already made a decision, I mean, it's not a-
I know, but I think this might help explore a lot. We can just take a comment on my social media, it's the time we can.
Tony does a pretty good job on, on being on social media. But I'm, I'm still working with him and just trying to get things accomplished.
Yeah, you made another call, had a little go around this week on social media too, must wish him a happy birthday.
Absolutely. Okay, does that at least give, give some kind of direction?
Yes, sir, thank you.
And I apologize that when I tried to answer you on Facebook, I, I didn't get the point across. What I was trying to say was, we, we can work with them and we've been trying to partner with them and they have been much more responsive than they have been in quite some time. They're, they're actively trying to get done what you're asking for them to get done. Whether they can get to where you want to, I can't answer. You're, you're asking the wrong person. You need to talk to them and see what kind of accommodation. But, and Rick has always been really good to try and work with, okay? He has, he has tried to, if he can modify what he's doing to, to meet multiple ends, he would do that. I, I just, I don't know where their long-term piece is. It's still, he's tasked with running a railway museum and, and running a railway. And that's also the part that pays his stuff. Anything else? If not, thank you very much, folks, I appreciate it.
She could back it up, say.
Because West Bayden, we've always threatened them.
I would not be on camera. Can I get, can I get out, Sam?
You can't, they always do it. Not a lot.
I love you, Eric. Yeah, chopping off the-
Make things cohesive. Probably water. Be suited up for me.
He called us up, I was putting a kid in there. And I said to my car, wait for it, call somebody back.
You don't pull water.
No, we don't, that's true. You need a whole water.
Wow. It's amazing, it seems like, duh. And you don't think that there's, I don't think there's, Christmas lights are worth it and the dog food. Well, that's for my, that's for my best, you know. So.
And we said the federal, you know, they have the most, we can't, we can't do a thing with it. Unfortunately, we all did this, of course, about that. We'd love to be able to sell them some of that, but we can't, we try every way that we can, you know.
Thank you, Marlene, I didn't mean to be, where, where, he's, what's his name, Don? I don't know anybody, yeah, Don.
Robert.
Peggy's here. Anyway, I'm teaching you forever.
No, you can be there and I totally understand what's going, you know, what you're doing.